It's six thirty. I'm going to call this meeting of the Joshua City Council this time. We do have the form present. This meeting is being done on Zoom. Hopefully we've got people who are signing in and paying attention to what's going on in the city. This is important stuff. We're going to do the pledges to the flags and then Mr. Black Kids will do the catch for us. Michelle Anderson is going to lead the pledge. So everyone please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, our pledge to the agency of Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Please remain standing with your hats. Father, we thank you for bringing us together to serve our city, Lord. We thank you for blessing us, giving us all such great lives here, Lord. We thank you for this wonderful city that we live in. We thank you for all that we get to do to serve it, Lord. Father, just watch over us tonight. Help us make decisions for this city, for the betterment. And we thank you for all of that, Lord. We ask you to watch over our first responders. All these things, we ask you, use this name.
Amen.
Okay, we're into our work session. First item is we discuss questions.
Mayor, the documents in front of you, we are currently at ninety, at least over ninety-one percent of the budget year. And we've got, you're still going to see some of the same numbers and areas have been before miscellaneous revenues and expenditure up that had to do with some vehicle buyouts. If you recall, we switched to a new leasing system this year with Enterprise. So those numbers are starting to look a little out of line, but they'll be cleaned up at the end of the year. Some three, the three eighty agreements, of course, we're not in there. So it's got the non-departmental miscellaneous line a little out of out of budget with some technology replacements. By and large, most departments are in line with their budgets and we haven't had any significant issues this month.
If I have some questions. Okay, we'll watch the next item then. I'd love to discuss your question on the Department of City Board, what we should commission president via Joshua official. I have an impression of this and after consideration and consultations of people, I don't think that's such a good idea at all. So if everybody's good with that, we'll just move right on.
Mayor, if I could make one quick suggestion?
Yes.
With the adoption of the new zoning ordinance, we have that repeat with the planning and zoning commission. It's in the code of ordinance, the whole zoning ordinance. It's technically, by adopting the zoning order, we technically repeal those provisions. But our people who put together our code have not deleted those, to repeal those provisions. If it's okay, I'd like to take, just put an ordinance on the agenda to get rid of that one reference, the planning and zoning commission, one reference to the zoning board adjustment in the code of ordinances because it's already addressed in the zoning ordinance. Just, just to make sure there's no repetition or dispute between which one applies.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you, Karen. Okay, how about number three, discuss discussion on tree preservation. After this, what are we going to put on here? So you have anything to say about this?
It just sounds beautiful, trees being cut down. I drive by Cooper Valley and not a single tree's there. So I understand I read the ordinance that we have and it says that there are unprotected trees. But what about, like, do we have a list of protected trees?
Yeah, it's in the ordinance. It's on page fifteen. There's a list that are not protected, but there's also.
A short list?
I know what I'm looking for.
So there are a lot of ways I read the ordinance and it seems like people can basically cut the trees whenever it's not convenient, I guess. Can we do some, I don't know, revising of this to make sure that at least the city takes care of some of the mature trees that are not there for a long time? Not totally shade the land, something like that?
We can make whatever changes to it y'all choose to make. The.
That there was not a single good tree in our home.
Well, the problem, there's, there's. There probably were, but the ordinance allows that if the tree is in the, in the footprint of the home or roadway or right of way, that those can be taken out. And so I think that's largely what happened. I think from what I've been told, there may have been a few trees that should have remained, but didn't. Based on, I think we have a tree survey now.
Yes.
So we can probably, probably check into that. We can amend this if, if y'all want to do that, but.
It looks to me like it reads that it is a little vague. Three, but not so much in the terminations per development. But what I, the question that I was going to have is about specifically about the Cooper Valley addition. Was that addition after we had created this ordinance? Or was it before? Because if it was before, then it doesn't call exactly the order. So I mean, they piled up a few hundred of trees and piled. I was more upset that they didn't offer, let someone cut firewood out of it after the winter. We just went through a big, we're having such a hard time getting firewood. I didn't see one stick of firewood get cut out of it. They just pick them up and mauls them and just shred it.
No, yeah.
Aaron, you have a list of the trees? Well, a survey or whatever. Yeah, so there may not be any identified protected trees in our ordinance, but for the most part, from some of the developments, some of the ones that are considered are your oaks, your pecans, your elms. But like the ordinance states, you know, the footprint, right of way, drainage nets, all of those areas are exempt from protection of any tree. So
certain, it's kind of hard to protect a tree when they don't show what they're going to do.
Right. And so with respect to the Cooper Valley Phase Five, there was a tree, tree survey performed and on the ground were identified that were taken, that did not fall within the buildable footprint, right of way, or drainage net.
Now each house has to have at least one tree planted in front of it, correct?
Well, that depends on PD. So some like Mockingbird and Heritage Two, they're requiring two trees per lot. So our normal ordinance only has one required for our basic ordinance.
And what are the trees that are required? Do you have like these trees that must be planted as a replacement?
We could please just have the caliber inch requirement, which is three inches.
No, the type of tree.
The type of tree?
We don't have anything specified on the type of tree, but typically they are always planted oaks.
Yeah, Heritage is, we've gotten live oak and red oak.
What I was going to say, I think there was a provision in there. They take out certain trees, like oak tree, con trees, red oak. They have to come back and plant certain caliber. You know, like one, two inch caliber tree back in the local, somewhere in that, that area.
Correct. And if that's a protected tree that falls within a, an area that's not listed or outside of that buildable area, then yes, you're correct. It has to come back.
So I guess the question I want to ask you, have they been notified? How many trees they have to plant? Since they tore out, there was a lot of oak trees earlier in Oak Creek. They tore a lot of oak trees out. Now, was it necessary to tear them all out? I don't know, you know, I'm just asking. I'm asking quickly.
Right. So from the tree survey that they performed, I mean, they only identified four. And all of the other ones that are within the buildable area, in the right of way, drainage nets, all are exempt. And so that provision that you just stated, it doesn't cover those areas. It only covers if it falls outside of that, but within that building, building footprint, that they have to replace it with a bigger caliper or whatever, however it's stated.
So I guess I'm going to ask this, it may not be you, maybe some of you. When they bring it flat in, are they bringing it? Let's just say, whatever it is that, and what they're going to tear down.
Our planner and our engineer?
Do they go out and actually look at the trees and make sure?
No, they don't. They, the developer provides the tree survey itself. So our engineer and planner, they review those.
So the list of trees is in the landscaping ordinance. The preferred tree lists in section eight, seven of the landscaping ordinance. And it's got a list of small trees, medium trees, and larger shade trees that are protected.
I'm given the impression a few years ago when we addressed one of the issues that we have to study would be done on how many, how many total trees is in the area that they're going to be building, their entire flat. And then a degree this financial judgment, if they're cutting down major trees, because we're going environmental, we're not, I don't care where you can build a house. I thought that we had talked about this, about the environmental impact, cutting giant oaks. And several of them were taken down, really, really giant oak trees. And it really is, can be detrimental to, to an environment to this. I mean, I go, I reference like where my son lives and up there, they hardly cut a tree down to build a house or to build a building. You drive up and you can't even see many houses or buildings from the highway. But in Texas, it's like we have this, this clear cut mentality. Let's just mow it all down and ply it down with the bare dirt and put up a building and then we plant a couple of trees that are there for ten years and get poisoned off. And we don't, we don't, you know, we're running the aesthetics of the thing. I mean, I'm glad that you guys put this on there. I wasn't here last month, but it, it's a concern, man. I like to release. So what you, you try to, try to see what other cities do to slow down, to tap the brakes on clear cutting areas. Because I don't believe it's just a study of these four trees. Were the only four trees that weren't in the path of, of a road or a home being built? I think it was a clear cut and just to appease the city's ordinance, let's pick four trees out of the room. Because they, they wrapped ribbon around thirty, forty trees one day. And they went in there and they cut out trees and they cut out trees and piled them up. And then the very next day I come home from work and there ain't none of them left. They clear cut all of those down that had the ribbons on them. So I mean, we all don't know what happened. I thought those were the protected trees. So it's, it's a concern.
The same thing.
It really is aggravating.
Between the high school baseball field, threatening the compounds, it was the same thing. Tie the ribbon off, okay, well, at least.
Well, I think the ribbon shows up from the surveyor who identifies the tree. But then when they come in and lay out the development, if that tree is in the path, then it, by this, the ordinance, it can come down. So if we want to, I mean, we can certainly look at other cities and see what they do. That is entirely possible. And I think part two of this, if we can go back and look at the tree survey and then compare with the layout and find out if those four or whatever are supposed to be there, we can find out if they are. That shouldn't, I mean, that's an easy thing to do.
And one of the, one of the things that other cities do to prevent clear cutting is that if you clear cut property, you know, I'm getting ready to develop a property, I'll go clear cut it. And that way then I'll come in and tell there are no trees. Is that the city won't grant zoning changes on that property for a certain number of years after clear cut. And I had, I had one situation years ago where someone went in and cleared up property in anticipation of development. And so a tree survey had been done. And they were, they either had to pay for all the trees they cut down, even protected trees. Or they had the option, you can't develop the land for like three years. So, so there was a huge disincentive and eventually, I mean, you, we filed a case on every tree that was cut down municipal court. And he eventually settled with the city for over a million dollars because he'd cut down thousands of trees and they're stacked up on the property of about fifteen feet tall. It was a massive number of trees. So I mean, there are some things you do, and it's mostly all the, if they go out and clear cut, you can't stop them. But they have a penalty associated with doing it and they won't be able to develop the property for a certain length of time. And that's a huge disincentive because city won't prove anything, any permits or anything for the property.
So am I understanding that we would like to direct staff to reevaluate our preordines?
Yeah, I mean, I'd be interested in what other cities do to be, you know, reasonable to work with from a developer's standpoint, but you know, with protected trees as a goal. I mean, we want to make sure that we're not being, you know, horribly difficult. We have to make, you know, have a current ordinance. But at the same time, you know, we're wanting our community to have
big enough trees.
Yes. So there has to be, you know, an incentive for them to accommodate that. Right. And may I ask, well, do you actually, that's your HOA full up, the trees planted, but well, we have a terrible summer. They only have to run to water. They only have to be planted until it closes on our house. And then I can pull out every tree out of it. Because it's my property. And that's, that's the issue. The tree only has to be there. The developer has to put the trees in, but you're not, the homeowner is not responsible for it. I think our HOA says we have to try to keep one alive in the front yard or something, but.
It is pretty standard in pre-ordinances that the ultimate landlord, ultimate property owner has the ability to remove any trees without, without permission.
Yeah, I respect that. I completely respect that. But I just, I just feel like they're good, but these properties just didn't help us. And it's just a mad thing, but you know, it is what it is. I think we should probably look into it, maybe, maybe a little bit more. Maybe compared to other cities' tree ordinances and see if there's if there's a way to slow it down, you know, or to limit it. Maybe have a diameter restriction and then kind of make them work a little bit harder as a tree survey maybe. And say, hey, you know, this isn't good enough. You're going to have to save more trees. You can build a road, you can give it even, things like that.
That was staying to the process that figured out.
Sir? So when they bring in PD, right?
It's upfront.
It's right at the beginning.
So it's far enough in advance that there's something that.
And do we have what Terry mentioned about a process that, that states if a a developer owns a property, they can't just come in and clear cut it and then come to us with primary class?
We do not have that current.
That should be something too, that we should think about embedding into.
This ordinance allows the property owner to take down trees. So if they do it before they develop, I mean, like what he's saying, if they do it so that they, to get out of the survey and all that, that kind of stuff, we, we should probably address that, like what he's saying, include that.
Include it in this or do we have another ordinance?
I would like to address that part of it sooner rather than later.
Well, we, I think we can do it all at the same time. We'll, we'll get some stuff put together.
Well, I'm just saying, is it two different ordinances? Because of the developer being kind of a category, do we need, is there? And I'm asking this to Terry, is there, is there another ordinance that needs to state that and then the tree ordinance reiterate?
Well, normally you put in the tree ordinance. I mean, so we, we amend, all we have to do, the landscaping, the tree ordinance is in the subdivision right. We just, and we don't counsel through those. So we don't, we don't do the P and Z and counsel and all that type. We don't have the time restrictions. Making amendment to the subdivision ordinance versus the primary order, we would all.
So we'll ask the staff to put that together and fall back to us next month.
Got it. Wow, okay. Well, about next month, but.
You said next week.
It's, I mean, holidays are coming up, so it'll be, there'll be lat agendas. I think we can probably get it done, but we can at least get you an update, but whether we have a rewrite for an ordinance, I don't know. You're going to have to cancel.
Okay.
Start pulling up these ones. Yeah, we'll, we'll get you some stuff. Now, do you want to see? I want to make sure I'm getting what you want. Do you want to see multiple sample ordinances or do you want us to put together what we think addresses your concern to present that?
I mean, I think, I think y'all have enough, an idea of what is realistic for the developer that still wants to sound vulnerable. Because you have to be mindful of both sides. But I think y'all have a pretty shitty floor.
Yes, I know we have to be careful in three words. On that, for special lines brought in, connectivity is under, uncertain, and I'm sure there is a senior Joshua.
We have our IT consultants that, well, we were on board this past year have provided us with some information on some fiber that the city would own. We have Jeff, the CEO from Total Verity here today. He's got a presentation for you guys. Step on up here and make yourself known, sir.
I'm Jeff Verity. So a couple of things that had been brought up when we were looking at the infrastructure for the city, not just from a public safety perspective. There's, there's some issues with how, how the connections are for public safety where these individual buildings aren't on a single network. So you can just jump to the next one if you want. Or so, we looked to provide areas that we see in city.
Sorry, should I turn it off? There's two spots.
So we looked at a couple of different areas, obviously, that we needed to provide citizen access. And there are some areas within the city of Joshua that do not have connectivity bridge forever. I mean, at all, or if it is, it's minimal. Well, there's examples that we've done with other cities where you can provide citizen access out of parks. You can provide it, give Wi-Fi, all of the, those types of things. We can get to that. So basically we came in, we did a whole design of where there is Joshua that are not getting connectivity today. How do we bypass that? How do we make the network secure for both the city employees, the city data, and then public safety and the transmission of all that data? We have to be C just compliant, which is criminal justice information systems. There's a lot of other compliance issues that you can run into if you don't have a private network. Currently, you guys use a shared network, internet network for both the city and the public safety is the only one that has one link into Joshua that's truly, truly private, but it's still over VPN and it's over the internet. It's not a secured fiber route or a point to point set. So what we did is we came in and wondered where, where these areas are, how we can help the city design it, put it in, provide the citizens' access. It's got a crank condition in it, part of different funds that are available to cities, help crank of each parks, roadways, intersections, anywhere that there's public access or public activity. So that's how we, what about this side? So this is an overall view. Yes, can see it too. So this is from the existing city hall here with TV parks, animal shelter and of Main Street to the fire station, to the first flash button, then to the ballpark area of the old park. And then from there continues up Main Street, crosses one seventy-four to the Mountain Valley area. Because we were told that that area is non-existent when it comes to internet, pretty much for homes. So if we, we did this this particular way, you would not only be able to secure all of public safety and all the buildings on private network for all the backup, the data, everything. You would have the ability to reuse other assets that are in the ground for other carriers to provide services to those houses, those areas, neighborhoods, businesses that don't have it today. Does that make sense? And this is, y'all can jump in and ask a question anytime, because I know some of this may not be familiar, or may, maybe some of this. I'm just seeing some questions.
You're saying that Mount, there are homes in Mountain Valley that don't have access to them?
That's what we were understood.
There's access, but it's not.
Wireless wireless.
Yeah, it's considered underserved. So if you don't have actual fiber to the home or a coax of a private connection, under, that is the statute that the state says would be underserved. If you can only get there wirelessly or you have to use Wi-Fi or some other medium, such as a cell phone booster to get connectivity, that's considered underserved.
That wasn't where I was looking for a house, especially number two on my list.
Yeah, always internet, right?
Yeah.
You gotta have it and it's going to be fast. So you can go to the next one else. So what we did was we broke it down into these areas and kind of where we would, where we put the, the primary junctions and how we would cross and understanding what text out requires and, you know, so all of this would be in ground, none of it would be aerial. We're not going to put it, you know, where it's hanging on poles that it just looks, looks bad. Hey, but it's not, it's not as, as, I guess, resilient over time as it would be if it was bored to put it underground. And then if you go to the next one, so this one basically traverses from the other side of one seventy-four back down to the ballpark, which would light that entire area for all citizens to have free public access to Wi-Fi on any wireless device. Again, on the city network and then back down to a fire station, which today, all of that information, both the cameras and internet is backhauled wirelessly to the fire station and then from there up to TV. So we're looking to get rid of all this wireless, if not exactly reliable nor secure, but it would be better if we did. But.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Adding, adding public access to to the city's network, that fact, the city's network?
No.
Would prevent or slow down?
No, sir. But segmented, the way that you run our cover ring or a private network, you have ninety-six strands of fiber in a bundle that's facing the surround and you peel off pairs that are only from point to point for a lot for public safety. That's the vast majority that is for public safety. To meet the compliances that every city has to have for that, that data. When they access FBI data, not everybody in the city accesses that, right? So those are completely private. On the backside of that, those other eighty-six strands that you want to use can either be, you know, leased to a carrier who wants to improve their cell phone connectivity, if they have a tower. They can use other carriers who want to deliver faster speeds to anybody along that quarter. So there's slice points all along that route that give you the ability, the city, to say, I have an asset in the ground. And now who, who is going to use it? And how much do we want to charge them to use? Okay. Does that make sense?
Yeah, makes sense. What about security if you've got Wi-Fi access all over the city into the same network? What about security if you've got Wi-Fi access all over the city into the same network?
Different networks.
Okay.
Hundred percent different.
So so there's no tie-in.
The dark side is only city. The lit side, and I know it's, it can get convoluted at times, but the lit side, the other strands, even though they may be in the same conduit, they are not connected to the same network. So you can leave all the public sector, public citizen traffic on a completely separate network than the city network and the public safety on its own network inside the city. Makes sense. So then this last area, we went down to look at the the city culvert that actually goes on the road tracks, which would save the city a ton of money because trying to get the railroad to approve permits for drilling under a railroad is is very difficult and very expensive. So coming down Main Street, when we come on the backside of PD, it actually goes along the railroad track that you can do in an easement to your own corridor, which you would take that conduit right next to that culvert underneath the railroad and then back down to have parks and animals. So you would avoid having to actually bore under a railroad. And then if we spool it up there, the proposal that we had looked at at the time that y'all discussed, which you you may be putting on your city hall at that location. So we kind of threw that on there in red, just as proposed, just to show you what that distance looks like in comparison with the rest of the city. If that if that plan changes and y'all put it somewhere else or whatever you decide to do, the great thing about having splice points all along this backbone is so you can go any direction from anywhere along. But currently, and I think I have it on a next page, you want to go to the next one. Those two, and you can barely see that purple line, those are the only two tier one carriers in the entire city of Joshua. And those are the directions they go. Zayo goes to Chisholm, that's the green one, and Windstream goes out to thirty-five, and that's the purple. That's it. Nothing north and south. That's it. The, well, Zayo has one going towards Clear, but then it doubles back and goes to the, it's just a secondary route. United Co-op. They're not on this map, and one of the reasons why is because it's there, or from my understanding is they're only serving ones that they serve electrical service to. I'm a United Co-op customer because I live in Johnson County. I have United Co-op as a service, and they deliver it to me. So I know that some of my friends that don't, aren't, aren't on United Co-op Power can't get the internet. So I don't know where that is there. We've asked them to update that, like, give us a map showing us, but we we don't have that currently.
I know when I talked to him about that, they said it's in such an early stage that they were only doing current customers.
Correct.
That they had the idea of expanding later, that they wanted to get the the backbone laid, so.
Yeah, and they're actually taking two ops into Fort Worth, and then they're going to to Houston, and then the other route goes out through San Angel, and then up there in Real. So.
Yeah, there, we talked to them about Mountain Valley areas and how we could work that, but they, their board has been very clear that customers first, and then they will look at
Yeah.
expansion.
And when we've talked to them in the past, you know, as a customer, and I talked to them, and I was, I told them, I said, well, what happens if the backbone is there? And I can hand you that. No, like, we are very, you need to let us know. So for them, that means that you could actually lease the city backbone to them. So what what that really means is you could lease a number of strands to them, and they would put a bulkhead in just every neighborhood and then be able to deliver to each house without having to ever put in the backbone, because they don't want to go spend the money to put the backbone in for an area that they don't.
So it's a difference of someone who's willing to build a backbone to create a network, right, as opposed to someone who wouldn't create a network to support.
Correct.
Only right now, right, because it's not financially beneficial to them yet.
Correct.
And see, y'all are doing that from a different angle.
Exactly. Our business has always been city government, public safety. That's what we've always done for the last twenty-five years. So when we started this, we started doing it with somebody like Alton, where they had Alton Road, they were between eight twenty and one twenty-one. They were like the quarter. Nobody could get into it. They had some old spectrum stuff there. But the businesses weren't moving there because there was no energy. There was nowhere to run an actual business. So they got together, we sat down with the barber guys, we went through with all legal, and we started developing how, how an infrastructure, you could put in infrastructure to support both the citizens and their requirements, right? You've got to have public access to what? You got to have a proposition. You got to have some cameras. There's a lot of like details around that to make sure that you can do it. And once you do it, now you own the asset, and anybody that wants to serve anybody in Alton City is going to have to use Alton City's fiber.
Originally, when we were talking, I'm not sure if you recall or not, but we were looking at ways to utilize the ARPA funds that we have, because these specifically can be used for broadband. But at that point, we were looking at splitting the cost with a, like a third party provider. But then we got to kind of looking at it in a business perspective to say, well, we can give them money to put in an infrastructure that they're going to continue to make money on, and we're we're done at that point. But yes, it is a service to the citizens where this actually provides, it it provides a long-term revenue stream for the city that we could put in back into the streets or to the CFP, but also we get our citizens some higher quality service.
And your ARPA funds do expire.
expire, so.
Services to.
Yeah.
I know internet helps back. Lots of businesses that have credit card machines wouldn't work. That's kind of something else.
Well, and even from the failure perspective, there's cellular backbones that they don't have enough. And they're always looking for fiber to get to another point. And it may not be that they need to use your entire backbone all the way at one seventy-four. They may not need to only go like, you know, half a mile. And then they can jump off a splice point to go to the next tower or what have you. But that is still an asset that can be used. And you own the conduit, and you own the fiber in it. Nobody else can just come put in fiber in your conduit. They can put it in your, you own conduit. So and we typically do it big enough that we can support that with eight, ten sets of ninety-six strand fiber. So you can only imagine how much that could actually provide.
I had somebody ask me a question about if the line, the fiber were to be cut, who would be responsible to me seeing the line?
It would. Okay, so during, obviously during the implementation, we're responsible for all of it. Once that's done, you have two options. You can either have it part of your A one call in, you know, for anybody that has to have a locate, and then they notify us to come and locate it for them, somebody sticks a drill hole, et cetera. But you also have the ability to have a small maintenance agreement that basically covers just the bulkhead on the end. It's likely to have something going wrong with the fiber that's actually in the conduit, something that is usually where it comes out of there and is connected to bulkheads to service either a business or one of the city buildings or something like that. So that cuts your overall like cost, long-term or maintenance cost exponentially now.
Any other questions? What would make, what would make this contact be?
I knew somebody was going to ask us, right now, this is all this proposed design, without having all the detail, it's almost impossible for me to guess, but on something that I can tell you for a two-point-seven billion dollar fiber bill that was done in Alton City, I think their maintenance agreement was like twenty-three years.
What if you do that? Like a ditch cut line, you'll fix it?
Absolute.
It's a.
That it's a. The only thing we won't do is we can't touch another carrier's network that's connected to your network. We can test everything up to theirs, but when we connect to them, it's their responsibility. And that would include homes too. So the city would have it all the way up to, let's say, the head of the neighborhood, and then from the neighborhood end, it's going to be whoever's building it. So look, these are some of the options that we talked about, use points of our cover point, multiple point network for city, city employees, public safety. We've covered kind of this, the leasing on strands, you can expand the markets, so fingers. And oh, I didn't say this, but multiple splice boxes. So normally, when you do a board like this, you can go a thousand to fifteen hundred feet. Well, that could pass like two or three, four city blocks in some area. So it's better to do it like every five hundred feet, so you have some in between. So the way that we designed this had multiple splice points or pool boxes with junction boxes or bulkheads in each one. So it gave us the ability of Main Street to go either direction, you know, like every third or fourth street all the way up to one seventy-four.
So it's expandable.
Exactly. But we don't want to put in more than we need or use now, but it gives you the ability to expand if anybody wants to build a big old building somewhere and they need an activity.
We ran a strand there. And so you run to the J box. Okay, then somebody, how many people up there go hard surface?
We don't know. We we really don't know.
Yeah.
You build.
Right.
If you offer a better made envelope, they're going to put each gram away.
Yes.
Because I, I know a lot of people in Mountain Valley that are sick and tired of.
And I'm sure, and and we, all of that would be determined way before we ever built there, because we'd need to know what the capacity was, right? And that would also mean that whether it's United or it's Pathway, or Zito, or somebody that's going to deliver to the actual home, those negotiations would have to be, we'd have to take place and get them signed long before we ever made that trip across one seventy-four. It wouldn't make any sense, because otherwise the city would be responsible for trying to do that, and that's not something I would leave anybody.
I agree.
Another thing we have to remember is this pretty much started about two and a half years ago when COVID hit. Because remember the difficulty and kids learning from homeschooling, set up hotspots and the fiasco with AT&T trying to come up, you know, things.
There's a lot of kids that couldn't get it, and if there were multiple kids in the same home, they're sharing a single hotspot, and they can't communicate with the teacher.
Teacher, they couldn't run.
Saw Zoom issues, go to meeting issues.
And we're headed in that direction, even if COVID never would happen. It just kind of rushed us to that, with that ledge where.
Well, dual credit classes are now being done. For high school kids.
This is. Yeah. Moving forward, it's going to be a normal way of learning. Kids and adults.
Some other benefits that we just put in there, we eliminate multiple shared internet connections. We can eliminate a lot of that cost of the city. You can get a bigger pipe, obviously brought in, we can segment, offer public use for city use for public safety. We've covered the vast majority of this, the multiple points of failure. That was one of the things I think you just brought up, Amber. So the way that this is designed, it can't be cut one spot for this to be down. So the re- re-topology is basically to go up and down Main Street, but it crosses down here by St. Paul, but the primary backbone would run over towards Mountain Valley. The the internet connection would be on one side and the other. So you can't, if you cut it anywhere in between, it's going to go the opposite direction to that wherever that internet gateway is. So you would have to actually have two cuts in the same segment at the same time to be completely down.
So one more question.
Listen.
You run the J box or a connected point from Mount. Okay, who's responsible to run from there to the individual home?
That would be who's going to provide the internet service to the home building. No, sir. You want, you want a carrier to do that? That would be a pathway, nice thought. Could be any one of them, but then they're going to lease your asset to get there, and then they're going to build to that. So it's going to save them. When we've seen this before, big carriers want it more than anything else, because they don't have to deal with permits. They don't have to deal with the city to try to get to an area that they just want to serve. We're actually dictating, hey, here's an area you can service two cities, and this is how much it's going to cost to get there.
And all that's determined before we even do this. They're going to go out in three hours to all these providers and say, hey, this is what we have, you want in. All of that would be signed way ahead of time. So there's really no guessing.
We, and that's why a lot of it is just, it's a preliminary design for y'all to think about and decide how you guys might want to go about doing something like this. And, you know, we're open to hear anything. Think that there's a better way, we can discuss it, but I know that just looking at an overall view of the map and how the city's laid out, it seems like there's a lot of business up and down one seventy-four that gets very little internet, off the Main Street, almost none. And when I can say, say internet, I mean dedicated, very high-speed fiber area, that doesn't exist very much. What does exist is it's chipped down. It's a fiber that, you know, eight or ten businesses are on all at the same time, because they can't sell dedicated internet access.
So just go for that mention there we were talking about earlier for the clear cut. Cooper Valley.
No, not, not, not at the moment. I mean, it could at some point, but.
So everybody who lives over there, Cooper Valley.
Well, they, they've got service over there now. I don't know. Well, they did, getting to Joshua Meadows. I don't know who's in there, but somebody's in Cooper Valley.
AT&T has a, has a long home network up at Chisholm towards that area, but I'm not a hundred percent sure of the segment.
This, this seems like more of a backbone part in the service providers would, would see that there's a backbone is to this point, if they can lease to get public.
Well, and without turning any tariffs, doing more drilling, because you get every single carrier want to put their own route into any of those neighborhoods. You're going to have eight or ten different groups drilling across everybody else. Right.
Of leasing their line to provide you with electricity. They can come in and charge whatever they really want to to provide your electricity, but they're using TXUs or or United Co-op's line to deliver it. It would be a.
Data centers are probably.
I looked through it and really I thought it was a good, good idea. To bring up, yes.
One, one other question. Does this, does this product, the ways proposed, or is that running it through the neighborhoods in Mountain Valley?
That's running to the edge of the mountain, because we don't know how, or I should say, we don't know who yet or how they prefer. If the existing phone lines or services are on the backside of the fences or alleyways or on the front, those are a lot of things that have to be done by what carriers would prefer. So we don't want to go put, you don't want to go put part of that backbone down the front of the street, like in the sidewalk area, and then find out that their service and everything from the back. So a lot of that will have to be determined from how that's routed.
But it would be through the neighborhood.
It would absolutely would be. So that's the only way, the only reason we were built to those areas of entrances of the neighborhood is so we can give the carrier that option of here it is, here's four hundred homes, how bad do you want? And and that's, that's where the city has a little bit more leverage on that, because now they can't get there without you. Now they've got to use you.
One of, one of the things that it also is, is very kind of excited about this. We got the ARPA funds. We've, we've got the money to do this without it coming out of our citizens' taxes that they pay to the city. And it benefits our, our citizens. That's why this money was given to was to help areas recover and to prepare for the next go-round or whatever. There's also another set of, of funds that are being worked on right now to where when we get those funds, we might actually be able then to expand it to the rest of the city. So, so this is just like the, the base of the pyramid, and then we can build on top of it from there.
And then, as you see, like the estimated project cost, I mean, that's around one point two nine, almost one point three. But that's based on everything that we do today, and as it changes, it could go down. We could have more providers that want to get on the network. So it may need to be more, but we would get them to pay for what they're requesting, you know, to get to a secondary neighborhood or even a building. If there's a specific building, they want off. So this, yeah, it's very rough, but it's, it's to give you guys an idea that what your, what your end goal, at least from our opinion, should be, is get your backbone in and have it enough to support everything along your portal. And if you do, then every carrier that wants to provide service will have to use your, your asset to get it. And the lease rates we've seen anywhere from, you know, three thousand to, you know, twenty-eight hundred to five thousand dollars a month by a carrier just to use a segment to get to a particular building. They may be selling a ten thousand dollar, you know, dual internet connection to a warehouse district like we were in Alton City, and they had no way to get there, but they were willing to pay five grand a month for the city to get. I mean, it's going to cover your costs frequently. It just depends, again, on what we can. It just depends again on what we can do from a lease rate from the carriers, which carriers are actually gonna provide that service to the, the homes or businesses. Because you guys aren't in the billing department, right? You guys don't wanna bill, I wouldn't suggest you ever do it. So let the carriers do it, they do it all the time, let them do it, you just take the money on the backend as you're using my asset to get there.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
You got, thank you guys for having me.
So our, our point right now then is, do we want to instruct staff to go ahead and start the process to get this going? Uh, we've got a, a good layout, estimate, estimate price, we know it's gonna be very good depending on how things go. But do we wanna go ahead and start the process? Okay, everybody, agreement? Mike?
Okay, so what, what I'll do is we'll, we'll meet with Jeff and we'll figure out what the first two or three steps are to start gathering this data and we'll just provide a monthly report to you guys on the status of it if that works.
All right. My word is. Okay, so what's going down to? All right. I think from mayor and council members and city staff, anybody on the council initiative you wanna talk about? Had going on? Okay, uh, at this point in time, I have a proclamation I'd like to read. There's no objection. While you can read, you may object afterwards. Okay, and this proclamation is for Constitutional Week, September seventeenth through the twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of all our liberties and bodies, the principles of our limited government, in a republic dedicated to the rule of law and whereas of Sept- September seventeen, twenty twenty-two marks the two hundred and thirty-fifth anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is needed and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniv- anniversary into the patriotic celebrations which will be commemorated. And whereas public law, nineteen fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitutional. Now, therefore, we hereby proclaim by the power of this me as Mayor of the City of Joshua, September seventeenth through the twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, the designated Constitutional Week in Joshua, Texas. For all citizens to participate and observe this important patriotic event by reaffirming the ideas of the founders of the Constitution. So, ladies, thank you very much for bringing it to our attention. We appreciate that very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm Betsy and thank you for getting this done so quickly.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to go into our public forum. Um, this is the time when citizens can address the council, we have anybody to address the council?
No, sir.
All right, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Without objection, we'll move on to the items separately.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
From my implication, I'd like to know the cost of number two and number three and how much they went up.
Okay. Uh.
Chief, do you have that information?
The, uh, cost of housing, the business, the housing.
How much are we paying?
Uh, we're paying, I believe, sixty-eight dollars a day. The ballpark, we don't house prisoners or active persons, maybe it's not a very expensive. Although there is an increase in cost.
As the same as the fire.
Uh, fire department, I, I would, I would assume so, it's the fire marshal's office, being a random one, right through the city. Um, I would assume we encourage that.
Okay, so item number one is regular meeting minutes, um, I'll just. Yes, sir.
I hate that, but I'd like to know because hopefully we're paying with meditation.
Okay, can we get that as we go through the China, John, we're running the China settlement.
Okay.
Okay. So the, uh, council members, Bennett's from last one. Would I have corrections please, Bennett?
We need a vote on that though, Mayor.
Motion. Sanderson, second, five, stickles. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Okay, item number two, the interlocal agreement for housing classified prisoners. Oh, yes. Okay, um, interlocal agreement, housing classified prisoners, fire department and police department. Any more discussion on those? Okay, so Mr. Kid, motion to approve the interlocal agreements. Mister Walter seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Zero. Item number three, consider possible action on the minimums to Jackson County extension system.
Chief?
So we pay a per user or per radio price, meaning for each portable radio that the city uses, we pay twenty-four dollars and twenty cents. For each in-car radio, we pay twenty-four dollars and twenty cents per device and that's for the carrier. Um, our last year's cost is under eight thousand dollars. Um, we're gonna just forget to go up, uh, this year, we've only added five radios, but not all of them are in service and so we're only paying for those.
Any other questions concerning this? Okay, I'm gonna take a motion. So it'll be a, I'll say, okay, so, that Mister Wright's theme moving, so you accept the agreement and Mister Kid seconded. Any other questions? All those in favor? Zero. Okay, moving on to the regular agenda items. Item number one is to discuss considering possible action on orders by the City Council of City of Joshua, Texas, authorizing the issuance of City of Joshua, Texas, Act Number Two, Twenty-Two-Pay, levying an annual annual tax within the limitation prescribed by law for the payment of the obligations prescribed in the form of terms, conditions, and dissolving other matters incident related to issuance, sale, and delivery of the obligations, authorizing the execution of a paying agent register agreement and a purchase investment letter complying with the letter of representations previously executed with the possible trust company, authorizing the execution of any necessary engagement agreeing with the city's financial advisor, annual bond council, and providing an effective payment. This speak up.
Mayor, if you might, you might recall last month, we had a discussion about this tax note uh, and, uh, that, that funding being set aside for, um, in preparations of a new municipal complex as well as possibilities from other security crew and then the fire department. So they, y'all authorized the, uh, proposals to go out. Andrew Friedman is here from Samco as our financial advisors to go over those, uh, and give you this information.
Good evening, Mister Mayor and council members, I apologize for the mouthful of the agenda captured, if I didn't write it, my name's Andrew Friedman. I'm the city's financial advisor with Samco Capital Markets. Just as Mister Pichard, uh, mentioned, we took bids on the tax notes today at noon, we received five bids. Hopefully you all have a short packet of information that showed the bid results.
Yeah, updated orders.
Okay, uh, and I apologize for what I did to bring hand out, I was driving up here for the meeting, uh, as we were finalizing these numbers. Uh, we received five bids, uh, which I was very pleased with, uh, the best bid coming from Prosperity Bank at a rate of three point three one percent fixed over seven years. And the other bids were from Truitt at three point three eight percent, Amagey Bank at three point six five percent, TIB at three point eight nine percent, and a bid from BOKF in Oklahoma at three point seven four percent. So very happy with that rate. Now that being said, uh, and I'm sure you all are aware, interest rates have been rising, uh, at a very quick clip, especially recently, in the last month. Uh, ten-year treasury bonds risen over forty basis points, nearly half a percent. Uh, and so, uh, the interest rate we're getting is higher than what we've been projecting in, in a perfect world. Still fits within the tax rate, uh, uh, structure that you all are adopting. Uh, given this is a small borrowing and it's amortized over a short period of time, being seven years, that interest, additional interest cost, uh, while I wouldn't say it's immaterial, uh, it doesn't fundamentally change, uh, the affordability of this for the city. And we certainly retain, uh, our future financing flexibility if we have our INS rate cropping and in each of the, the following years after this, so we can allow you to lower your INS rate or fund future capital improvements, which we discussed uh, previously, so you have that, that flexibility going forward. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have. Uh, with your approval tonight, uh, these notes will close on October twelve, funds delivered to million dollars.
Mike, do you have anything else you wanna add?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so while we're taking the motion.
We most we accept the bond, the loan subject is right, the.
Through. Prosperity Bank.
Prosperity Bank.
We have a motion by Mister Wright's theme and a second by Miss Anderson. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Sit here. Thank you all very much. Okay. And. Legend of this new beginning October first, twenty twenty-two and September twenty twenty-three.
Mister Mayor, in accordance with the civil statutes of the state of Texas, we present the following proposed annual budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. Budget is aimed to provide the overall financial plan to provide city services for the upcoming year. In addition, the proposed budget provides the funding for planned expenditures, contingency appropriations for operating funds that total seven point nine million dollars. The twenty-two, twenty-three budget is balanced without the use of fund reserves. Uh, revenues over proposed expenditures are just over a hundred thousand dollars. That amount could be either appropriated by the council. It can be placed in CIP, it can go to reserves. Um, it can go to streets, which is what y'all did last year. Uh, but it's really up to you. And I think the discussion has been based on um, the, the possibility of, of, of a police and, and city hall facility is that we just put that money back where it could be used for additional expenses for that. If it can be re-appropriated at any time, we're gonna be looking at some things mid-year that we weren't able to get into budget right now. So that would give you a little bit of leeway for those things. The, uh, property tax revenue, uh, the, to, to, the recommendation stays at the current level where we would not have a rate increase, uh, which would, um, generate additional one hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars or six point seven percent, which would be projected. This fiscal year budget, um, does include the addition of three full-time firefighters, one full-time fire captain, a human resource manager, uh, continued technology upgrades as we continue to, uh, bring our IT assets, current asset management software. Total increases for staff. We tweaked the insurance benefits, increasing some capacity in the animal shelter for cats and kittens. Additional fire communication radios, thermal imaging cameras for the fire department. Uh, some parking, um, adjustments at the fire department, time entry system, police vehicles, uh, the rotary mower, step kettle for public works. Uh, there was in the CIP, uh, drone replacement in the fire department. Things that were requested by department heads, um, was, was presented last month during the original presentation. What it does not cover, uh, requests that we were given that, uh, I have opted not to fund in the current budget. Uh, two patrol sergeant positions in the police department. Some aggregate storage for public works that would, uh, move that undercover. Uh, portable traffic signals in public works, uh, the addition of a building inspector and development services, and a additional sixteen by sixteen metal building for the park department. The structures that were requested because of the potential move of the city assets, we held off, we're not gonna build anything else until we get all these feasibility study questions answered. Uh, and then the, the traffic signals, um, that is a needed item, it is in the CIP. Um, I just haven't found a way to fund it yet, but I'm working on it. And the patrol sergeants, we, um, as discussed with the chief, that we will be revisiting it mid-year. All of that said, uh, that, that also, the, the budget does include the receipt of the tax note that was just approved. However, none of those funds have been allocated. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
We need a voice, voice to put on this.
This is just the part of the hearing right now.
No questions? Okay. It said, uh, seven thirty-seven, we'll close public hearing on the budget. Seven thirty-seven, we'll open a public hearing on a proposal to the, to adopt the act or the tax rate.
Um, again, I just spoke to fund the budget, uh, as discussed, we've opted to, uh, adopt the current rate, same as last year, so the rate will not increase. Um, and, and of course with things that we're hearing and, and obviously there are gonna be some homes where evaluations increased, and so there, there's gonna be some, uh, some additional revenue brought in by that. But that is not a, that is not a result of our, our tax rate, it's a result of praise values that we have no control over. Um, this also puts us, um, Mayor, we were not able to increase the homestead exemption this year. But this, this allows us to do that next year. And so that, that is why we could have, we could have lowered the tax rate a few cents to, uh, to sixty-eight, so three cents. That's a few dollars a month on a house payment, but if we increase the homestead exemption, they see that, that lowers the house payment, the, the one last time did, or certainly lowered mine. And I expect that we will be able to, um, double, uh, what the current home ex- home exemption is for next year. And that is something that they will see.
Any questions? Okay, and seven thirty-nine, we'll close that public hearing. Okay, item number four, discuss considering possible action on or disproving the annual budget for fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-two and September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Any questions? Any discussion about the budget?
Mayor, one question, can y'all, can you tell me, give me an idea of what you want me to do with that leftover money, or do we wanna just? Or do we want to just put it in reserves and let it set until something comes up for mid-year? You can't.
I'm just going to make the motion to be accepted.
I think we should consider just sitting back for a little and wait, wait to see where we get on the feasibility stuff.
Me.
And then make a solid.
That's the safest option, because you can access it. It's unrestricted, so, I mean, it's.
Do you have a question? Right?
I'm going to make the motion to be accepted. We can put a hundred thousand dollars in the account for whatever community, care or for the new city hall or hiring departments, whatever we're going to spend it on, whether on down the.
The state reserves.
Let's just say reserve.
Okay. Okay, so we have the motion by Mr. Wright. They.
To approve the budget.
I'm sorry. Researching the hundred thousand dollars of excess.
Mayor's a record vote, so.
Okay, and we have a second by Ms. Anderson.
Mayor, if I can just confirm, it is to approve the ordinance adopted.
Yes.
The ordinance, okay.
This does require a voice vote, so, Johnny?
Hi.
Mike? Angela?
Hi.
Hi.
So, six zero. Okay. Item number five, discussing considering possible action on an ordinance not giving the city of Joshua a proper tax rate. Discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. King, seconded by Miss Nichols, to accept the proposed tax rate. Record on this as well. Ms. Anderson?
Hi.
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 Hi. Hi.
Proof six zero, the ordinance to adopt the. All right, at seven forty-two, open public hearing on the waste renovation of zero point nine three five acres of land situated in Thomas W. Bear survey, abstract forty, county of Johnson, Texas, located at twenty-fourth Metro, to allow for the destruction of a residential home. Mayor and Council of Property is currently in the U T J of Joshua and has been filed by the per the development agreement with the city of Joshua. The proposed annexation is progress to allow for the construction of a residential home. Water is provided by the Johnson County Special Utility. Is owner present? Got anything you'd like to say, sir? Okay, anybody here speak your favor up? Somebody here speak their post up? Want to rebut those statements? Okay, so we will close the public hearing at seven forty-three. Item number seven, discussing considering possible action on approving the ordinance, annexing zero point nine three five acres of land situated in Thomas W. Bear survey, abstract forty, Johnson County, Texas, located at twenty-two, twenty-first Road, to allow for the construction of a residential home. Do I have any questions or discussion on this?
Mike, I might motion to approve the. Analysis of this.
I have a motion by my kid to accept the innovation. I have a second by Mr. Wright to steam. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six zero. All the rights that we use go on to. All right, item number eight. Discussing considering possible action on the development agreement between the city of Joshua and Joshua Development Company relative to the residential subdivision development of Joshua Meadows Division based on the seat and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. Mr. Walden, I don't know. Mayor and Council of the Plant Development, this property was approved for residential use in two thousand and seven. We require the developer's team to be executed and the public works requirements are required. The developer requests a way for credit fees, credit spiral for proposed improvements or dedications. First of all. That is approved. Any questions? He requested to pay to Mr. Smith.
He already paid the fees with the prior development agreement for Joshua Meadows, thanks to the.
Mr. Mayor, actually, he's going to be doing both.
Doing both?
Yeah, we were just visiting with Terry, there's nothing, but there's, it looks like there is going to be a part in this phase and the next. He has two pieces that.
Any other questions? Discussion? Motion?
I'm going to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement with the Joshua Meadows Division page three C.
Okay, Mr. Walden, we approved the development agreement and authorized the city manager to sign it. Anderson, second. All those in favor? Six zero. Item number nine, discussing considering possible action on the resolution for the submission of application for the ballistic shield for active shooter response.
I want to turn it exactly over to the top holder. We have a five-foot ramp through the governor's office to purchase acquire ballistic shields. The top holder is spent a considerable amount of time. We've got this ramp part of this requirement. More for any questions for anybody?
Twenty thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars for six, front level three ballistic shields. We'll stop all live around except for our. You can get a level four, but they're on wheels. The reason I'm asking for six is speed. So each vehicle can have a shield. So, respond, they don't have to wait for one to come from the state. And realistically, when you act the shooter at a school, for example, you'll be there before half the schools. In my practice, Chief Kyle will probably be there, because they just have officers just for bar and water. So it doesn't really cost us anything, and we're not guaranteed to get six, so I asked for six, because one.
They're a little under four thousand dollars. That is correct. For the level. Johnny, you.
I just say, I think this, we need to do all we can to protect our officers. And I'm proud to see this grant. Do, and like to see more, because there's a lot of grants out there.
Okay, so I'll send the motion.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution, approve the submissions and grant for ballistic shields for active shooter response.
I have a motion. I shall. Mrs. Anderson, to approve the application grant. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Six zero. The grant is good. We're good. Okay, item number ten, discussing possible action on the Johnson County E S D contract for fire emergency services. To further this evening, so.
This agreement that they've sent over has increased. Last year, the agreement was for a hundred and fifty-six thousand. This year, the base agreement is one hundred and nine thousand, just a little, a little over. It also includes up to five thousand dollars for equipment and training, five thousand dollars for emergency prepared apparatus, reimbursement up to three thousand dollars for required I S O and N F T A related equipment testing, training scholarships, and the, they will be funding, this is a new program they're funding for cities, full-time firefighters. It's the same, basically the same program as the safer grant. They will fund all of it the first year, and then the percentages go down, like the safer grant does. So, they have, they will allow up to four personnel, and so, they will be paying for the three full-time firefighters and the captain, once approved. They also, there's been some discussion about how the agreement would be provided. First, they thought they would just do it through an interlokal, and then their council decided that he just waived it to include this stuff in the E S D appendix in the current contract, where it talks about the sixty-five thousand per year per firefighter, maximum of four. One and two years, we cover twenty-five percent. They cover seventy-five year three, it starts to drop a little bit. So it basically is in line with the safer grant. And there's a few other little stipulations here. This, this is the only addition to the appendix from last year, is to include these positions. And I will tell you that I was told by the executive director yesterday that they also are putting together a program to provide apparatus as well. And he asked me what we needed, so we may well be the trial version for them. And we'll see where that goes, but it's something that they're looking at doing with funding from the sales tax that passed, that they started getting this year.
Right. On the, can I, that we've got here, the non- municipality volunteer retention program personnel, where we just value the primarily volunteer department. Will we be eligible for those in cities?
No, we gave those up for the paid positions. That was a trade-off, which we benefit greatly by, so.
Anybody have any questions? We have a motion. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. King to accept the E S D contract for fire emergency services. As second by Mr. Walter, any discussion? All those in favor? Item number one, discussing considering possible action on resolution cast votes for the fixed municipal government of the street board of the city's way.
Well, I can't tell you much about this, Mr. Mayor, first time I've seen it, but we have some votes on the page one sixty-nine of your packet, there's a list of candidates, none of whom I know, well, I know place eight is Chris Kaufman, he's the city manager in Granbury, I do know him. And he's a straight-up person, so I can recommend him. None of these other folks do I know.
How many votes?
We have. One for each.
Yes, one for each candidate.
And one for each candidate.
For each position.
Yeah, I'm sorry, each position. Oh, timeout, here's another page. I know Mike Land in place eight, but Chris Kaufman is closer, I know him more. And I would recommend place nine, Opal Maldon Jones. He's city manager. I'm sorry.
Is it necessary that we vote on every position, or can you just vote on the one?
You don't have to, you can vote on any or all, is my understanding.
Can we make a decision that will give it to your discretion?
Yeah, I think you can delegate it to Mike and.
Knock yourself out.
Good show.
Voting this to the city manager?
Yeah, motion. Pass second? Yeah. Oh, well, okay. Ms. Anderson made a motion to allow the city manager to make a decision on these votes. I think I, Wright to steam, any discussion? All those in favor?
I can give a tease.
You got Mike. Okay, item number twelve, discussing considering possible action on the resolution creating a charter review commission. Holloway?
It's tied up to you.
Just based on what was discussed last month, a council meeting, put together an ad hoc committee, a charter review commission. Each council member gets one vote, and two, two members or select lot of council as a whole. And again, my gallows, I've taken a look since charter, possible charter revisions already. And, you know, I think we're all willing to sit us anyway, we can, when the charter commission meets. But it's up to the council, I'll give it to one member.
I know Terry pretty much covered it all.
And I guess this is kind of what you prepared. This review committee, what, what I envision being is there's this, was a regular, regular changes or updates to it, and they look through those changes and everything and tweak them or whatever, the great fact for consideration. They're not necessarily go through the charter and try to rewrite the whole charter.
No, I mean, as a practical matter, when you get to charter amendments, I'm not sure what the biggest number is. I've seen sometimes thirty and forty charter propositions, that's my personal opinion, that's just overwhelming. I'd say anywhere from three or four up to seven or eight is probably ideal in terms of not overwhelming a voter. And, and again, we have some provisions in our charter, I think Allison and Mike can confirm. And I mean, they're not earth-shaking things at all. For example, I think we're, Allison required to keep a journal of all the meetings versus minutes. And I don't think, I, that's one of those issues, I don't think we necessarily need to go back and change that. But to me, the key provision is that we do want to change, our last charter election, I believe it was two thousand and twelve. In two thousand and thirteen, the constitution was amended. So for cities that have three or four-year terms of office, if someone leaves office within that last year of their, here for us, be last year of our three-year term, the council can appoint a replacement for the next election, and that is a significant cost savings, rather than if you, if we don't do that, you have to call elections at a hundred and twenty days. So technically, if someone resigned or moved out of town or whatever in December, we're going to have to have an election by the end of March for someone who would serve for about one or two council meetings and then have to be elected again. So I think that's one of the, I don't know any city that hasn't unveiled itself that provision, because it does save you the cost of having a special election. So that's one thing I think definitely you would recommend to a charter review commission to consider amending the charter to allow for that. And again, I'll defer to Mike and Al, but a lot of these are, I perceive as being kind of cleanup or clarification issues, nothing. Nothing that screams out, this is, you know, some law has changed, this made this all illegal or unconstitutional, so.
So, last month, we talked about getting everybody to have a person that they want to see on the commission. Johnny had Glenn Warren. Angela had Blake Hall. Okay, and Julie Torres. Okay, and I have Charlotte Conley, so we have three positions. Mike, do you have somebody you want to?
Yeah. I asked my wife about that, she said no. This is the last committee I put her on, she's almost awarding me, so. No, I just, on the top of my head. Like we shift to anyone else that may have another.
Mayor, I will mention to you, Scott Hendricks was a former city council member a number of years ago. Also, he was the head of the Z B A for a while. He, he has offered, he's getting ready to retire. He's offered to serve. If, if somebody wanted to use him, he said he'd be willing to do it.
Mr. Joe Holler. Should it be a citizen decision?
There is no state requirements of any type of residential.
We're planning on meeting, you know, two, maybe three times, depending on how the discussions and everything goes. Maybe.
Yeah, yeah, we believe we'll have it wrapped up by Christmas.
And then.
To go.
If I was reading through your mind, we were going to have two council members to be as part of the committee. So. All right, there you go.
He's currently served committee on board.
Does anybody want to go here to be on this? Who else? Johnny, Shelby Johnny will be the council representative on it. And then I was my representative. Now, we have a resolution to create this committee. We've got all the names filled in and all the blanks. So you can motion to create?
Yes.
Make a motion to create a charter review condition to alter amendments to the city charter with the names.
Okay, Ms. Anderson moves. Mr. Kidd seconded. Any questions? Why long?
This agreement was in the [inaudible]. There was a clear lack of leadership in that. A lot of [inaudible]. And so we can get over that one, which we kind of like [inaudible]. The first responding officer regardless of agency, the ones in jurisdiction to make decisions and tell the [inaudible] by someone from that jurisdiction. And allows for other personnel to respond. One of the provisions was that it becomes part of the local agreement. This is just standardized response, not just an active group.
This will cover something also in what happened with the body of the police station. That's probably something, because we're not just a school shooting. Anything that you found to [inaudible].
It just, it all allows agencies to request assistance, which we already, we've already done. There were certain, certain agencies, Johnson County, that's not part of the string and not part of the open agreement. Agreement, so it brought them into it and allows to share resources so that we can actively manage a larger incident and allow outside agencies.
And this isn't just the Joshua protocol. This is the regional protocol. This is all going to be on the same base.
Yeah, all, all agencies, all law enforcement agencies in Johnson County on the same shooting.
That's, that's wonderful.
You have questions? Okay, all ready to take a motion?
I'll make a motion. Forward, accept and [inaudible].
Okay, we have motion and second. Who did you got a little second? Okay, simple motion to accept the agreement. Go on, second. Change of session. All those in favor? Okay, item number fourteen, best considered possible action on board appointment. For those of you who are here for these appointments, thank you very much for your patience, letting us give you that.
I would request that y'all did at the beginning.
Say anything about this?
Well, first, thank everyone for working with me, turning in your applications, answering any questions. Really appreciate that. We absolutely have a great community that's willing to step up.
Yes.
If you want, we can go by each board one at a time. And yeah, what I've done is put the applications by the applicant's top preference under that board. So under appointing a zoning.
Johnny is going to sit down from the type A board. And we have an agency on the P and Z. And he has agreed to go on to that. If it's okay with everybody else.
Seat number one.
Please keep the same seat down. All right, okay, go ahead now.
Okay, so one's taken care of. Seat two, Brandon Gage, he has not reapplied. Seat six, Brian Sears, he's unable to reapply. Yes. Seat seven, Billy Jenkins, Mr. Jenkins is here and he has reapplied. And then as you can see, we got several names that would like to have his position, with the exception of David Villet. He actually is wanting to change to a different board other than P and Z. One other note, Julian Torres, he's turned in application for a seat. He currently serves as alternate number one. We join up. That's correct.
Julian has been very cooperative, showing up to meetings when they needed him to be there. He has been an active part of the P and Z. I'm one of these people that he volunteered, he did all the part of, he's been through all the training. I would like to see him have a seat. Okay, so if somebody wants to make a motion.
Do we want to list all the names for P and C and make one motion for that board? Or do you want to do each member individually? Okay. He is, his, his term's not up.
Oh, these are his terms up. Okay, so some of the seats are available.
Yes, so we. So there's three seats and a. Yes.
Johnny's taking one.
He's taking the vacant seat number one.
Right, and so, and Billy Jenkins is retaining his. So there's two, I could see.
Two, two and six.
And so, is there any? So we're going to assign Julian Torres to seat two. Is there a normal protocol on making a decision on the others?
Well, we, we have two seats, so we want to nominate the two people and.
Right, but I mean, as far as deciding between.
Seat to seat.
The multiple people, because there's what? One, two, three, four of the people there.
All right, is, Robert's here. Yeah, I'm with [inaudible]. Is Jason already here? Yes, hey Jason, and Ryan? Okay, so if you might ask questions of Jason or Robert to help me just make a decision on which one to think about putting on there?
Well, I'm going, I'm going to tell you, Mr. Purdon, you should be a council member. You've been on the board before. I want here to do this again, so it is my recommendation. You know, so we are recommending.
You have any particular background or anything that would be relevant to [inaudible]?
No, ma'am, nothing in particular. I'm the Joshua [inaudible]. I built here about a year and a half ago. Just wrapped up, it's a little seventeen years military service and look at the certain public capacity to be better rooted in the community. So my name is Onhawper. And just because one board may not be open, I'm open to all. For me, it's this certain aspect of, you know, contribute, get back, it's known. We live in a community of active education schools, joint education foundation with the, with the [inaudible]. So really just looking at where we've been being active. Good, thank you for stepping up. And we'll be in a year and a half in, already ready to start. Serving, serving the country, not serving up. Yes, thank you.
All right, so.
Well, since these two guys are here, let's go ahead and allow them.
I would make a motion that we approve for plane and so we see one, Julian Torres for seat two. I'm sorry.
So we see two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Seat two would be Julian Torres. Seat six, Robert Purdon.
And alternate.
And alternate two. Mr. Perkins.
And are you going to keep Mr. Jenkins at seat seven?
Yes.
Okay.
Is Mr. already here?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, that's who I mean. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, that's, I'm sorry. And then, yes, that's correct.
So we have a motion.
Now let's get my.
We have a motion for Johnny Walker for seat one. Will join us for seat two.
Robert Purdon.
Robert Purdon for seat six. Billy Jenkins for six, seat seven. Jason Halligan senior for alternate one. Ryan Mayhart for alternate two. Okay, do I have a second to that one? Okay, Ms. Anderson moves. Right, seconded, discussion. All those in favor?
You can vote it doesn't pay.
All right, going to the zone, zone ZBA.
Zoning board.
Okay, we have Jennifer Anton, who wishes to apply. Ashton Nix is expiring and did not wish to be reappointed. We have Kevin Meredith, who is looking to be on the ZBA. So.
Yeah, Ms. Hancock is here.
I would say the same thing about every board that I've been on. It's interesting.
Alternate positions that are vacant at this time. So do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve for seat two of zoning board adjustments. Jennifer Hancock, seat four, Kevin Meredith.
Okay, Ms. Anderson, move. All those in favor? Zero. Okay, we need to have a more. Okay, we now have three positions open on, on the board. Okay, we've got Shelley Anderson is wanting to be reappointed. Lady Childers, place four, and she wants to be reappointed. And Angela is stepping down, plus we have place one for Johnny. Okay. Pardon?
I said, well, that's convenient.
Yeah. Okay, so we have Joe Holler in. Not here. And Joshua Burns, who also isn't here at the seat. So.
I like the motion we take place one, Joe Holler. And police. Six to Randy? Okay, you're stepping down, right? Okay, and we put Josh Burns up there.
Okay. Right, Steve moves to put Joe Holler in place one. And Joshua Burns in place six. A discussion. All those in favor? Six, zero. Okay, type B.
Mayor on type B, Ms. Sharon Price has rescinded her application for personal reasons. And also on type B is where Mr. David from earlier was interested in serving.
Just to put it out here, David is a proven personally by me to replace my wife on board. I would like to see him in that position. If that's okay with him.
I'd like to motion to move him into place six. Reappoint himself. Right, and Jill Thunderbird. Ben Walden.
What?
What? Ben Walden and Jill Thunderbird.
No, for type. Right, they're. So for. So for type.
Mr. Merrick, we replaced Mr. Wright.
So mayor, just for clarification, we have seat two, four and six. Seat two is Merle. Which who has reapplied.
David, do you want to stand up, introduce yourself?
David Villet, we've lived here about four years now. I hate to say where we came from, we have been Maui for like thirty years.
That enough ought to be enough to say no.
We get all the best people here.
Yeah, no, Yatra Dawson, we love, we live across the street. Very impressed with everything tonight. Just very encouraging. Maui, golfing tennis and had a business and our kids ended up state college over here. They went to Wausau Hachche [inaudible] or something like that, university. But the kids, the grandkids are here and we came over a few years ago, so. I'm up at DC about four or five days a week playing tennis. Love the chicken trip.
Okay.
Mayor, for clarification or so everyone knows, Ms. Kim Carter's here. Also, if there's any questions.
And Ms. Carter, you had said you'd be interested on serving just about anywhere we find a place for you. Did you?
Well, I was specifically interested in economic development, just because that's where my background is. But I'm open.
Okay.
No, we have seven members on each board. AMB.
You don't need alternates?
It's, we've never had a problem, usually most.
Find it, I will come.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Bright seems to move to set himself in place two. He invested these in place four and then put it in place six. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six, zero. Okay, heritage preservation. We have seat one, Ricky Priest, is supposed to be a council member. In that seat. Seat two, Robbie Runfield, who has applied to be reappointed to it, and then we have two vacancies in four and five. I would say, Kimberly, again, the, the, unless there are requirements for.
Let me pull it up here. For the heritage. They're three-year terms, three members who owns property or businesses located in a heritage preservation overlay district. One member shall be a council member, one member shall be appointed as a zoning member.
So.
So she would have to live in.
Own property. For a business.
She would, you live in, well, correct? Is that in the heritage overlay? No. Okay. You body on the council, one of the two for the heritage.
It's only as needed, they've only met a handful of times. Usually a Tuesday or a Thursday.
The name goes back. Place one. You own that board?
No, I was, I was, yeah, buying my thumbnail, waiting for somebody to freak out.
Okay, so, keep my one, the Angela Nichols, place two would be Robbie Runfield, do I have a motion?
We approve Angela Nichols for place one, Robbie Runfield for place two of the heritage preservation committees.
Okay, we have a motion by, just a second, a second by Mr. Kidd, for Angela Nichols to be in place one, Robbie Runfield being placed two, any discussion?
Mayor, if I may, I'm sorry, I just confirmed with Terry, if it's something the council wishes, we can always bring a ordinance back next month to make changes to the qualifications, where you can add a citizen into it. Since we have vacancies on there.
What else is there?
I don't want control board.
Okay, no. Let's see, what else do we have?
Well, these are just.
That's the fun stuff, that's.
I know.
That, that, that's the good stuff.
Yeah. Yeah.
You'll service someone, you'll sign into this, don't you? You don't have to be there to meet it.
I mean, I mean, while I'm volunteering, I really got a hard core. And it was really the economic development. So.
The TIF. Mayor, we, we still have the TIF board to go to, the tax increment. Infrastructure, it covers pretty much the area like where Panda Express, McDonald's and all that areas.
It's, mayor, before we go on, I think we have a very, we have a motion.
Yeah, we have a reservation. So, any other discussion, all those in favor? Six, zero, thank you. Okay, so. Dr. Stewart in place one, Mike Kidd in place two, he's willing to stay there. Sandra Reynolds in place three, Kit Hall in place four, and Carl Hall as the staff representative in place five.
I make a motion, he can't hold control, has a report, as stated.
I have a motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Mr. Braxton to approve Dr. Stewart in place one, Mike Kidd in place two, Sandra Reynolds in place three, Kit Hall in place four, and Carl Hall in place five. Any discussion? All those in favor? Zero. And the TIF board. Okay. Okay, on the TIF, the mayor is supposed to be in the position on that, so I would be taking Mr. Halligan's spot. Okay, place two, Mr. Moore is at her, yeah. Okay, place three, Charlotte Colly, yeah, she was not interested in reappointment. So, we have place two available, the other two places are the county places. So.
What is the TIF board?
They, they, they should usually meet one or two times a year to discuss.
Joshua Station and portions of the city from there south are in what's called a tax increment finance district. And it's a, it's a restricted area for commercial development that only has certain type of development in it, and it's, it's an overlay that's, that lays over the zone. There are certain requirements to go there that are not in other places of the city. Is the.
Do they make the determination what can?
It's to determine what projects are that they will fund that tax increment that they receive. So you just, streets, sewer water, more infrastructure type projects, if they, they approve. And those approvals are in some of the council. It's mostly infrastructure.
Yeah.
There's no shame.
There's no shame.
Yeah, I, no. It's just not floating my boat, I'm sorry.
We will keep you on the list for favoring.
Yes, yes.
I'll make sure.
Yes, absolutely.
That's just where I have my background.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so. Yes, we have two open spots on there.
Yeah, and prior, it was the mayor, and then it was a council member, that's why Mr. Moore, he's been on there since he was an active council member.
I'll do that. Okay, you want that?
We got another spot, sir.
You want me back, go.
Okay. So, do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve for the tax increment finance for seat one for Mary Kimball, seat two for Mike Kidd, and seat three for Merle Britton Sue.
Okay? A second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Anderson. And second by Ms. Nichols, myself in place one, place two, Mike Kidd, place three, Merle Braxton, any discussion? All those in favor? All right, library board, seat number two. Kristy Jones is going on, and Nicholas Larson has requested to be placed on that board. Is Larson present? No? Okay.
Anybody know Mr. Larson?
Yeah, he currently serves on another board. Tell you which one. Let's see. He currently is on type B, he's just, has not been attending. Schedule. Yeah, his term ends. It's Nicholas. He's seat five. And mayor, if, yeah, that will leave seat five open in type B, if you move him to the library board.
There she is, right there.
Yeah, he's, he's not requesting to be on this board any, any longer, no, the type B.
Okay.
It will be, it is now, yes.
He's requesting to be on library board instead of.
Correct.
There we go, there it is.
So. I'll accept the motion.
Motion, we accept Nicholas Larson to the library board.
Now.
Not if I see.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Kidd, second by Ms. Anderson, to put Nicholas Larson on seat two of the library board, any discussion? All those in favor? Six, zero. We're gonna go back to type B for just a moment, because we now have a seat open. Which, which seat was you on?
Seat five.
Okay, and we have a wonderful audience here.
Previous motion.
So the motion would be to.
If you would, in your motion, remove Nicholas from that seat and replace with that.
All right. So I make a motion that you remove Nicholas from seat five. And have Kim put in his seat and accept the other nominations. Merle, Dustin, yeah.
We already have a motion for those three.
Doesn't even.
And you got a second? Okay. And motion by Mike Kidd, second by Dr. Walter, to remove Nicholas Larson from place five on the type E seat. And install Kimberly Carter in place five on the E seat. Any discussion? All those in favor? Zero.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I have two questions. Was I, was I included in the? What type A? Was I included in that motion?
Yes.
My second question is, so for ZBA, do I still have two vacancies for the alternate?
Yes.
Do you have any interest in being alternate for the zoning board adjustment? There we go.
So we're gonna get him as an alternate on PNC, and we're gonna put him on the ZBA as well.
Hold on, hold on, because the ZBA. We put up. You put it up, yes.
I make a motion that we approve Jason Halligan Senior for as alternate one for zoning board adjustment.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Mr. Braxton, that Jason Halligan Senior as alternate number one on the ZBA, any discussion? All those in favor?
We have any other members of the audience that want?
According to your petition on your grant for shield, if it doesn't come through for all six, the CBA will still pitch in.
Thank you very much.
Item number fifteen, special center of hospital action authorized request of proposals to administer services for the postal patient for the community country unfulfill justice, community development block grant administered by the Texas Department of Agribusiness.
Yeah, this is just the first step to apply for the community development block grant, it's up to 500,000. We talked about maybe Cobb Street, Streets, Drainage is our number one priority. Once we go out for their RFQ, then we'll know who can administer the grant, then that's when we start the process of actually applying. And then that, all that be brought back to the council.
This is just the first step.
That's correct.
Okay.
Oh no, this is actually just going out for RFQs and RFPs on this.
So the motion is to accept the without bids for the RFP and RFQ. Go ahead, second?
Yeah.
Okay, there's a motion by Ms. Nichols to proceed with the RFP and RFQ of the development block grants. And we have a second. Braxton. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six, zero. If I have any questions on any of the staff reports? Hearing none, or right long, we are not going to be going to the next session, signing with the motion up. Any future requests by any council members, we have an extended.
Yes, I would like to have consideration for modifying the requirements for the heritage overlay committee if there are no residents living within that zones, interested in the position that we allow other city residents to serve on board.
Any other requests? Okay, hearing none, I'm adjourned this meeting at eight thirty-six.